Seven oh two, I'm gonna call to order the Wakefield Planning Board Meeting of October 12th, 2021. Consistent with the Governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the provided link. If you do not have a camera or a microphone on your computer, you may use the the provided dial-in number. Please only use dial-in or computer, not both, as feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. And as always, I ask if you, if you have a speaking part, please make your name on your Zoom window, your proper name, and we would prefer that you use video when you speak. Alright, so I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Jim Hogan.
Here.
Do you know?
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
And Bill Spaulding.
Yeah.
Alright, Bill, I've made you co-host in case I have some issues.
Thank you.
Also, Aaron Kokinda and Susan are with us. Alright, item number two, approval of minutes from September 28th, 2021. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes as presented? Alright. Hearing no objections. Do I hear a recommendation to accept the minutes?
So move.
Alright.
Second.
Initiated by Bill and seconded by Jim. Roll call vote, Theo.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
And myself, yes, to approve the minutes as presented from September 28th, 2021. Right, item number three, we have an A and R plan for Border Street. Alright, I'm gonna share my screen and pull this up. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Alright. The applicant is here. Would you like to explain what's going on here with you?
Uh, yeah, is it possible to maybe zoom in? Cause it's
Sure.
How's that?
Perfect. Alright, guys, so what we have here is I own both lot 25, P 25 and P 29. When I purchased my home almost 12 years ago, the person I purchased with from, when they purchased it from their, the prior owner, they never got a lawyer involved. So even though they bought both lots, both lots were never made officially owned by the person I bought it from. Hence, when I bought it, it was the owner that I bought it from had to make sure those two lots or the lot 29, make sure it was free of any holdings or deeds or anything like that. So, and in the last year or so, I've been thinking about remodeling my home, but talking to general contractors, they said I couldn't really do anything unless, until I got both lots, P 29 and P 25 combined together. So P 25 is my residence, P 29 is my backyard that connects to Salem Street.
Okay. And you have access from Border Street, correct, from New Salem Street?
Correct from, so, no. So the only way to get into Border Street is from New Salem Street. So where Three Border ends, that is now just grass and trees. I guess many years ago, that was a full street, but not anymore.
Okay. Zoom a little bit on this. So I'm just gonna explain a little bit of the process here for some of the newer members. Those not required plans are basically a right that every owner of property has in Massachusetts is to subdivide or divide or join parcels through a process, I mean, of saying that you're not doing a formal subdivision. It is a lot of times a subdivision of land, but is in Massachusetts. They gave that a special distinction of a not approval plan. So this is what we have before us here. To have a an A and R approved in Massachusetts, you only need to satisfy three requirements, proper frontage, access, and geez, I'm blanking, blanking on the third part.
It's quality of access.
The quality of access and wasn't the other one, the did it have to do with non-conformity?
Frontage in area, so that's what it is. So so technically, those are the only requirements that need to be met for us to have to endorse a plan. Except for if a town has their own rules and regulations, what people need to follow. So basically, if these plans are presented to us and they follow all these rules, all our rules and regulations and the statutorily required items, we have to sign off on these. We have to endorse them. We don't approve them. We just endorse that they meet our rules and regs and the state's regs. So that's how we have this plan before us right now. What, the process for this is that Aaron, a person will send a plan to the town, it'll come to Aaron. And right now, I'm usually the one who reviews them since I was instrumental in redoing our A and R regulations a few years ago. So I just take a look at them. For the most part, most surveyors that present plans before us, if they've done it before, they know what to do. It's, it's been a policy of mine to review the plan, and if it doesn't meet our rules and regs, is to not accept it for consideration. We do have a process of of a 21-day grace period in order, if we, if there are some issues on there. And then other attorneys will ask for continuances. Technically, we cannot give a continuance on a plan, on these plans. So I try to make sure that they follow our rules and regulations, and if they come before the board, they should be able to be endorsed. So I just wanted to get a little bit of the process for new members. So the other thing that kind of came up with with Aaron and I this past week is we basically realize is that we have a the A and R, the Mylar that needs to be submitted and signed, and have a Form A document that needs to be signed also. In before COVID times and when we were in person, we would actually have the plan before us. We would get a PDF ahead of time so we could take a look at it, but we were actually endorsing the actual plan. Right now, we are in, we are approving, or we are basically giving our endorsement on this, on a PDF, which most of us have not seen, actually none of us have seen the Mylar except for Aaron. So we have to have a, maybe a new process here where where we make sure that first of all, that the PDF that we're looking at is an actual copy of the Mylar plan and not a separate created PDF. So what I'm proposing that we do is to conditionally endorse this plan with, upon review of the actual Mylar to make sure it matches this, this PDF is what I'm getting at. So normally, we would have the Mylar in front of us, we would look at it, we'd all agree, and we'd endorse it. So that I think is the process that we need to follow now. So I don't know if anyone has any comments on that. Okay, Bill?
I do. Thanks for explaining that, Matt, because it has been a while, and it's good to understand like what our options are with this. And I do agree, it's important for us to see the Mylar. We can't just say, okay, this plan is great. We all agree, endorse it. But the Mylar could have a different line or something missing that could, could cause a holdup for Mr. Borda. I mean, it's, so we don't want that to happen either. So if I would propose that two options, what we've done in these COVID times is we would have the plan dropped off at one of our houses, the Mylar, and then we would, then that person would then deliver it to the next person, the next person, it would end up back to Aaron. I think that was a good system that we've used. I also would consider that we just all stop by and say hi to Aaron and sign it at her office. So I would propose either one of those options that would work fine for me, but it would great, would be great to hear from the other board members to see what they think.
Well, we all do need to sign it, so that is the process we're gonna follow. But my point is, if for some reason, if the Mylar, the PDF that we're looking at differs from the Mylar, I don't want anyone to, to take that because we voted on a PDF that we saw on our screen that we have endorsed that plan, because if the plan has changed, we may not endorse it. So that, that's basically the gist of what I'm trying to get to. So
So at these, I guess the, what I've done is I've printed it out anyway, so on a small piece of paper, and it just helps me. So if I do go down, I'll have that with me. I don't know what other board members are planning to do, but I don't mind leaving my printout of this with Aaron, if she doesn't have one, so we can review side by side. So each member, if we, so option A, if we're stopping by Aaron's office for each of us to go sign this, if we do endorse it, the PDF can just be next to the Mylar and each member can compare. Maybe it's best, Matt, if you're the first person, since you do have the knowledge and experience with these plans more than the rest of us. So I'm not sure if, if that's a good way to proceed or not, but that's what I suggest.
Yeah, that, that's fine with me. And what I can do is actually print a full-size printout, since I have that capability, and just overlay it and make sure that they line up. So
A quick question, Matt. And I can't remember if it was a subdivision approval or if it was an A and R endorsement, but did we have Attorney McGrail? Did we allow, when I was the, the current chair, did the board allow me to go and sign? I think that was for a subdivision though, not for an A and R. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we, we could, the board could vote to have the chair sign on behalf of the board, but I would, I would rather it all signed off by each board member to continue that. So
I would agree with that for this A and R too. Right, yeah.
Can I just bring something up? I just noticed going through our A and Rs and kind of our regulations here, just some language that I don't know if that needs to be exactly what it says, but I notice, I'm sorry, I'm using, using my mouse, like you can see what I'm doing, under the approval, approval under the subdivision control law not required. I know in our bylaws, it basically says above the top lines of the six signatures, it should say the Town of Wakefield Planning Board next, with the next line, approval under subdivision control law not required. And then below those lines, no determination as to compliance with zoning ordinance requirement has been made nor can be construed as intended by this endorsement. Now, I know there's some language below saying similar things, but I didn't know if we need to be following that exactly. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I think as long as, as the gist of it is, is there, we don't need to be verbatim. So that would be my opinion. So I don't know if others have, I mean, we, we could be a stickler for exactly how we, we want everything, but we need to have a little bit of
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd agree with that, Matt. No need to get fussy over the exact language, as long as the, the gist of it is consistent.
Okay. So do I hear a a vote to endorse this plan, or does anyone have any additional comments on this? Bill?
I, I have a question for Mr. Borda, and it's more just about the plan and the intent. And, and I see that the deck is really close to the Anthony Lauria property, and I was wondering with the footprint of your current footprint of, that's shown here on Lot P 25, just to, as you're going through this whole process, and I know you did speak to a contractor, as you mentioned. I, I think it would be good if you do get a chance to talk to the building inspector, just to check to make sure that if you are renovating or changing anything, that what you're proposing to do is worth the effort. That's just the only, only comment I want to make.
Sure, to let you know, and again, this is probably like a one day to the next, it would, if I was to do any kind of renovation, it would be somewhere near the patio, where it says patio, instead of an L shape, make it a square.
Right, and I guess my point is, and I, I don't know who your GC is, but please talk to the building inspector over the GC on what you can and can't do.
Not sure, and to be honest, my general contractor said, you know what, it's not even worth having any discussion until you combine these two lots together.
Okay.
So this has been a long time coming, step one of many hundreds, I'm sure.
Yeah, Theo.
Yeah, the, there's a timeframe, right? That we have to, we have to do this within 45 days of today, right?
Within 21 days.
21 days.
Yes. But for the most part, we vote on these, the, on, we, we recommend endorsement on the, the night they come up. So, yeah, we can run into problems if, if we let it go past 21 days where they could be conditionally approved and trying to avoid any of that. So
So the 21 days, like, is not, I guess the 21 days is for us to sign the Mylar, inclusive of that?
Uh, no, it would, it, it's just for us to act on it. So if we vote to endorse this, and for some reason, it doesn't get signed for 60 days, it, it doesn't matter, we still voted to endorse this plan. So but obviously, we, we want to sign it as soon as possible. So
And if I may add, I am, I currently have two excise taxes, one for P 29 and P 25. Even though they both are my properties, my lots, I still have two separate excise taxes, which I am led to believe that P 29, I'm paying a little more because it's considered a frontage where in reality, in best case scenario, it would just be one lot and my frontage would be Border Street, P 25.
Alright. Alright, so do I hear a vote to endorse this plan?
I motioned to endorse this plan contingent on every, the board reviewing the Mylar and the Mylar being consistent with the PDF plan as currently presented.
Alright, thanks, Jim. Do I hear a second?
I can.
Oh. We'll call that seconded by Bill. Roll call vote to conditionally endorse the, I'm just gonna read it off, just so we have it. To conditionally endorse the plan of land, Three Border Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, prepared by Edward J. Farrell, professional land surveyor, dated September 20th, 2021. Alright, roll call vote, Jim.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Theo.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, so we will coordinate. I'll coordinate with Aaron to have this ready for signature and how do we want to do, do, is everyone want to go to Aaron's office? Do we want to shuttle this around? How do we want to, what, what does the board feel is the best way to do this?
I'm open to either, whatever works best. I'm always here. So
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we stop by Aaron's office and say hi and sign the Mylar.
I concur.
Sounds great.
Alright, does that work for you, Megan?
I will, I will make it work. I will.
Megan, I can also come to you too. So you let me know what works best. Okay.
Alright. Alright. And once the plan is endorsed, it's gonna be turned back to the owner for recording. It needs to be recorded to register deeds. So
And I'll notify, I thought it was muted, and I'll notify, I'll put a letter together for the town clerk to notify them once everything's signed off of our decision.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Aaron. I'm sure we'll be having more emails to let me know how to finish this process.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
Alright, item number four. An A and R plan for Evangelist Way. Pull that plan up. We can see that, okay, or? Alright. So the attorney was unable to make it tonight. This is a fairly straightforward plan. Just so you know, it, this has been in the works for a while. The surveyor who was doing this heads, had not filed the plan in Wakefield before, and frankly, was not up on our A and R regulations. So this has gone back and forth quite a bit. I, I actually talked to the surveyor and, and let him know some of the deficient items that are on this. Again, it, it's, it's my belief that if a plan's gonna come before the board, it should not be rejected for lack of of, you know, following the rules and regs, unless the, unless the surveyor continually does it, and then at that point, I don't have a problem doing it, but if it's a, a new surveyor, someone who hasn't come before, so a new attorney that isn't aware, I try to work with them a little bit. So on this one, this has been going back and forth for a while. So let me zoom in so you can see, basically, is this what was formerly parcel A at the, at the end of Evangelist Way, which was basically a, it's almost a unbuildable parcel. It's got some wetlands in it. There's some encroachment areas into existing encroachment areas with the cemetery in back. So the owner at number 19 apparently had been using some of the land and decided to, you know, obtain a piece of that parcel A and combine it in with their existing lot. So in this case, they're, they're doing in a new lot that is a not a buildable lot, so that needs to be stated on there. It is. And then one of the things I also that we have asked for is basically a little narrative of what's the purpose of the plan? So basically, this is right in our rules and regs. Tell us what your intentions are. Don't make us guess. Just don't make anyone guess. Put it on the plan. So the purpose of this plan is to transfer a portion of parcel A as shown as lot 4C to existing lot 4A. So basically, it spells it out there. So I don't know if anyone, everyone has had a chance to reviewed the plan, and does anyone have any comments on this that maybe I can answer? Bill?
I have a question about the drainage easement. I know we've talked about easements in the past, and usually they're existing easements, and we're not looking at proposed ones for, and I, I look back through a couple, a bunch of A and Rs, and I don't remember us endorsing or even seeing a proposed drainage easement. So I started to look up what the drainage easement means in Massachusetts and how they work and who maintains it and all that information. So my concern is that with this drainage easement, I'm just concerned about where does the, where's it flowing? Cause on this plan, it's really hard to tell. And I did do a loop down through the, the cul-de-sac and went through and looked, and it's really, is it gonna drain right back into, towards the cemetery? Is it gonna change anything different than what's happening now? And my concern is like, why is there a need for a drainage easement?
Well, the, the 20-foot wide drainage easement is existing now.
Okay, so the proposed part is not
It's basically an extension because
It's an extension, okay.
And, and that was, that was my doing, because originally, they did not have that on there. And I pointed out that there is a existing drainage easement there, so perhaps it needs to be extended.
Well, I mean, I see the existing, but the proposed part, I mean, this is new, and is this something that on an A and R is a flag for us that if we're extending or endorsing a proposed drainage easement, should there be something that also explains who is going to maintain that?
Um, normally, you normally, the conditions of an easement are outlined in the are outlined in the document that actually creates that. Because it's shown on a plan, it does, this does not create an actual easement, it's showing where one is proposed to be created. So going forward, there would need to be some kind of document that transfers this portion of the easement to the town of Wakefield to continue their drainage, you know, whatever drainage purposes they have in there, so.
So if I understand that correctly, by endorsing this plan, it doesn't actually approve the proposed extension of the drainage easement?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just depicting what, you know, the intention of it, so, and in this case, since it's a, the town and there's a public utility that crosses it, which is a drain line, if they were not to actually follow through and give rights to the town for this, the town would have due cause to, to go in there and maintain their drain anyways, so. Because it's basically a continuation of an existing easement, so.
All right, well, I'm not as concerned, there's, it's not like there is a house or a property right behind there.
Yes.
Currently, so.
So, and full disclosure on, on this, I, I do know quite a bit about this because I actually surveyed Evangelist Away when it was accepted as a street, so I, I have done all the work down here. It was back in the eighties, but I still did the work, so just, so I do have a little bit of knowledge on, on this, so I know what's going on there. And if I was at work, I could show you all the old plans of what happened there, so. But having a proposed easement on a, on a A and R plan or any plan is, is perfectly acceptable. Again, just because it's on the plan, it doesn't mean someone has rights to it, so.
And to your point, Matt, when we're endorsing this, we're only endorsing that it's not subject to the subdivision control law. We're not commenting one way or the other on any of the other zoning compliance and potential non-compliances of these items, and so as far as I understand it, the, because this is not, you know, it's fulfilling the lots with the access to a way, the way is publicly accepted, and that the, the vital access is provided, and the minimum frontage is, is, you know, provided, and then some, that we, we basically essentially have no choice but to endorse this based on the way it being presented correctly for all the other conformance items.
Correct. But also, if, if we, if this playing game came before us, and that drainage easement was not extended, we could at that point say that we're working on behalf of the town is that they need to include that in there, where there needs to be some provision, so. That's one of those things where you kind of need to look at the underlying plans that these A and Rs are coming from, to make sure that there are some potential rights on there that they may be omitting by not showing something, so, in this case, one of the original versions of this plan, they changed that, that twenty foot drainage easement was, I believe, depicted as a ten foot passageway that they were trying to put in there, and I pointed out that there is an existing drainage easement there that you need to show, and it needs to be continued across this new lot, so. Again, a lot of people may not pick up on that, I happen to do that because that's what I do, so. So. This is also one of the reasons why we try to get these plans to board members, you know, as soon as possible ahead of time, is so you can review it, you can do your own due diligence, you can pull up existing plans and make sure it makes sense. We'll remind you, one of these plans that we got at one point, we had a, a lot that said not to be considered a buildable lot because it had no frontage, yet there was a house that was existing on there that was completely omitted, so that was one of the reasons why we changed our A and R regulations to make sure that you would show that, so. And if we see something that needs to be corrected on our A and R rules and regs, we can, you know, we can amend them and correct that issue, so, just, so if someone sees something that you believe should be on there, we can discuss it and vote to change our rules and regs, so. All right.
I can ask two quick questions. The, Matt, you said there was an existing public utility?
Yeah, there's a is a drain line that, that goes across here, so there's a catch basin at the end of Evangelist Away, and there's a pipe that goes out there, it's not shown here, it's, it's not required to be shown, so it doesn't have to be shown, but there is a pipe there.
I mean, I'm looking at the Google street image, so I can see the catch basin, God, okay.
Yeah, and that drains out to that back parcel there, so.
Really, got it, okay. And for us to find the original plans, that's, that's just going into town, town hall?
No, this would be the registry of deeds.
Got it.
So. What normally, so they've got a, one of the plan ref, you know, they've got plan references on this that's shown on there. There's actually a few more plans that were used for this that aren't shown, but normally what I would do is I would check what the deed references for, for both parcels. I would review those, see what plans are referenced in them, and then pull those up at the registry of deeds and look at those, so. Again, I don't have access to my work files, but basically whenever I get any plans, whether it be a subdivision and an A and R, I, I download all the plans that are used to create that, and I go through them and I check to make sure they all work, sometimes I even check the math. Again, if, if their math doesn't work and they have an error on there, it's, it's something that I will note, and, but we're not here to, you know, backcheck everyone's work, so if someone makes a mistake, it could get through, most, a lot of times they do, so. So this is, this is one of the PDFs that I noticed probably most likely is not a copy of the Mylar. So that's why I brought, you know, Aaron and I started discussing this, that this is not a copy of the Mylar plan, and it took me two seconds to realize that. Billy, you might notice that because it's the locust plan is in color, so Mylars are in black and white. So this, this could be something where something may have changed, and that's why we need to, I think, conditionally approve or conditionally endorse these plans and then review them before we actually sign them. So. So if no one else, else has any comments or questions, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve based on conditional review of the Mylar for consistency.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct it to conditionally endorse. And I'm just gonna add, so Theo has made a motion to conditionally endorse the plan of land of Zero Evangelist Away, Wakefield, Massachusetts, prepared by Vidneer Engineering and Environmental Services dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty one, last revised August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Go for it.
All right. We're gonna give that one to Megan, Jim graciously deferred, so. It was voted by Theo, seconded by Megan, roll call vote, Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And Megan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, so again, this plan will, I guess reside next to the Porter Street Plan in Aaron's office, and we'll coordinate getting these signed, so. And then, Aaron, you're gonna notify the attorney once it's signed, so you can come back in and pick it up and, and report, so.
Yeah.
All right.
And then again, I'll notify the town clerk once it's all signed and we're all comfortable with it, and he gets the plans, just so it's on file too.
Okay. And yeah, that's the other thing is, once these plans are endorsed, the owner has to come back, pick it up and record it, that's not a service that the town provides, nor should they, so. All right, so. All right, moving along to item five, items not anticipated by the chair, so. So basically, well, one of my things I want to talk about is that maybe I've seen a couple flaws in our, in our regulations now that we're in, we're doing remote. We're doing remote meetings, and, and one of them, we highlighted tonight, was that the Mylars are not a copy of the plan, so basically, what they should do is they should print the plan, print the Mylar out, the surveyor should sign it, and then it should be scanned, and that scan should be sent in a PDF to the town with their Form A filled out, their check in the Mylar, so. This may be something that we should update our A and R regs on. Aaron and I were discussing other things, I believe one of the plans, the border street was not originally given to us with the Mylar, is that correct, Aaron? So Aaron pointed out that that is also not stated in, specifically stated in our, in our regulations, but what we do have in there is that they also need to meet the registry recording standards, and they also need to meet basically CMR two fifty, which is other regulations that govern surveyors and engineers in Massachusetts, so. We, we may want to just add that in there anyways, but basically, we, we can't endorse a paper copy of a plan anyways, it has to be a Mylar, so we may want to consider revising that also and adding that in there.
And something else too, I think it's something that we've talked about from the beginning, Matt, which I think we're heading in the right direction, getting them sent in PDFs and able to review that way and not waste so much papers, looking at the number of copies that we need legally, I know right now, I think it says seven hard copies, so something else to just think about too.
Yeah, yeah, we may want to cut that down, or, or maybe put in there at the discretion of the town. Because I know we do a lot of submissions with, with different boards around the state, and we have hundreds of copies going in, and I know for a fact that most people don't look at them, but it's, it's literally hundreds and hundreds of dollars to to print all the stuff out, send it in, and most of the time they all get recycled anyways, so, but yeah, that might be something we, we want to do. We, yeah. I hope at some point we're going to be back live, but this could be something where we continue to, to do remote meetings due to weather or other factors, so we may want to basically take some of these processes that we've learned during these times and, and codify them a little bit better, so. All right, the only other item I have is, and I know Theo and I were talking or emailing back and forth this week about there's some questions on posting agenda items, how they get done. I explained it to Theo, but I'm going to explain to everyone, basically, for the most part, all agenda items come on the agenda from discussions out of our meetings, so if we want to have something on the agenda in future meetings, we talk about it now, and then we can put it on there, we do this to be out in the open and in public with everything. There are some things like approval, not required plans that statutorily we need to act on, so these do come on in between our meetings, but if we have ongoing discussions, we need to basically, in a meeting plan, when it's going to be on the agenda next, just so it's not a surprise to anyone. And we, we do have other things that pop on, like subdivisions and zoning changes, but you'll notice that for those, the first time you'll see them, they are to set a public hearing date, so there's minimal discussion when they do, you know, their first presentation at our meeting, so. If someone were to not attend our meeting or pay attention to it, they wouldn't miss anything, so. I just wanted to point that out, does anyone have any comments or questions on that?
Yeah, I the, I was looking at FAQs about open meeting laws, deliberation and electronic communication, and I think, I think you're making an important point. I thought I was able to email the potential draft questions for when we schedule our next public meeting about the Lake Overlay District, because that's something that has already been discussed and recorded in our meeting minutes and, and in the videos, because the, the clarification is may a public body member communicate with other members over email, and it says yes, but in limited circumstances. A public body member may lawfully email a quorum of the public body only to discuss scheduling a meeting, comma, distributed meeting agenda, or to distribute reports or documents to be discussed at a meeting, provided no opinion of any member of the public bodies express, so I, I think it is like an important fine point that, right, the discussion item be on the agenda so that then an email could be sent in, to that, to that point.
Yeah, so, so things can be, can be sent to the board without an opinion on it, that's true, but if we didn't have it on the agenda, we really couldn't, we shouldn't really discuss it at our meeting until it's publicly posted, so anyone who wanted to follow along with that could, so I think that's just the distinction is, things can be sent, but if we don't have it, an agenda item, if we don't have that on an agenda item, we really shouldn't discuss it, so.
And, and there's no way in between meetings requesting that an item be added to the agenda within, within the period of time so that it does get publicly posted to the, to the agenda?
You mean like an ongoing discussion?
Right, right, like I, you know, in, in all fairness to the, the rest of the board, I should have, in the last meeting said, you know. you know, let's make this a discussion item for tonight. Because we had already talked about that we would have some draft questions for consideration.
Yeah. Again, to to the spirit of the open meeting law, to me, it it needs to be an agenda item that we set, you know, if it's an ongoing discussion and we we intend to include everyone, we wouldn't want it suddenly popping up on the agenda. Out of, you know, without a little bit of forethought and planning on it, so someone who potentially wanted to see what was going on could, so, so. To me, I I think they need to be set at a meeting for a specific time. I mean, we could put on, we could put on lake zoning every meeting if we wanted, but then, you know, if we didn't discuss it, it would be a little disingenuous just having it as a placeholder out there, so. In the spirit of the public open meeting law, I think we should do it at a meeting so that the next meeting, people are aware that it's coming up. Maybe others have a different point of view on that, but I don't know what the I guess this would be a question for Tom Mullen on how he would consider something like that of just adding agenda items in between meetings, so. I guess that's something we could discuss that with him. Bill?
I have a question. I mean, in this specific, I think I think there's different examples that would fall under, yes, it needs to be on the agenda, or I believe the reason we have on the agenda is items not anticipated would be if something came up and it needed to be reported to the board, like if somebody went by a site or noticed something of a previous project, and I I think this is the best scenario I can think of for items that can't make an agenda, like if I had gone by Prospect Street and noticed something was going on there that didn't fall under the approvals of our plans for the for the subdivision, I would bring that up under items not anticipated. I I think that's a good example of something that should be brought up at a meeting because if it was just sent as an email or out to the board, it, there's no public disclosure on that. In this case with the OS, if I understood it correctly, if you were going to share the example questions, I feel that could be just sent out in an email to all of us and we just don't respond. And then if any of us wanted to bring it up during the meeting, or a question about it, I think we could under items not anticipated. But I again, maybe you're right, Matt, and it should be a question for Mr. Mullen to to sort, like which which questions or which agenda, which item should be on an agenda versus which items can be brought up under items not anticipated.
I could reach out to Tom tomorrow and just get his input on what he thinks is the best way to go about it.
Okay, well, maybe I think if if it were to go to Mr. Mullen, then it would be maybe like an either or, if it's something that is a continued discussion of a previous project, is that something that should wait for an agenda or can it be brought up under items not anticipated? Or I guess the third option is, could an email or a correspondence go out to all board members regarding like the example I had about going by a previous subdivision and noticed that something wasn't being done correctly or as approved?
Well, perhaps something that that is a one off or basically what you say is almost an emergency, we could that is something we, you know, for full disclosure, we 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 found out about it tomorrow and we should act on it as soon as possible. We have to wait till our next meeting, so maybe that's something that we would put on. But to me, especially with the lake zoning, we've we and especially me have gone out of our way to make sure that we're trying to have this as open and as inclusive process as possible. So something like this, I wouldn't want someone to be surprised that oh, they read the agenda and I don't see anything on there, I'm not gonna tune in tonight, and then they found out the fact, oh, you guys brought it up and started discussing, you know, possible questions and you now have an outline of what you want to do. I I don't think that would follow the spirit of a public open meeting, that's why. I know, that's that's my feeling on that, so.
And I I think to, Matt, your point is we as the board need to publicly vote to establish the agenda for the next meeting. So there's there's, even though you know, like the the agenda gets posted, no, no later, no earlier than forty eight hours before the 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 public meeting, which theoretically would have included you know, another agenda item. But but you can, but you wouldn't want us doing that because that wasn't agreed upon at the prior meeting.
If, again, if it was an ongoing discussion, I I I think the perception from some people might be, you know, this just popped up forty eight hours before the meeting and you decided to put it on there.
Sure.
And, you know, I wasn't paying attention or I was away. I I wanted to be involved in all those and now you're starting to add these in, so. That, you know, I would rather err on the side of full disclosure, have it out in the open, again, so no one can accuse us of trying to do something sneaky behind someone's back, which believe me, we've been accused of many times, so. And it was truthfully, it was different when when we had in-person meetings, because we would put things on the agenda and no one would show up anyways, so. This is a little bit better where people can see the process, it's recorded, someone can go back later and and review it, so. In a way, this has made us follow the open meeting laws a little more to the T. So and I I think we should strive to do that.
Yeah. So my my other question about all of this is, we want to be, we want to use our our time efficiently and and we want to use the public's time efficiently. How are we effectively to like edit documents in advance of a a public meeting, I mean? So. Because I mean, like, you know, you don't want a quorum of board members to be working outside of the meeting, but you also don't want to take two hours of everyone's time to like fully vet something. You know, to to give members the like, the only opportunity for a quorum to see something, you know, if you're really fleshing out an agenda item. You know, would be, you know, you wouldn't want to give, you know, like the only time to see a document would be as part of the public meeting.
I I think that's what I'm struggling with is, you know, I think Theo did a good job of, you know, going and soliciting feedback from an individual members of the board and trying to frame and outline of, you know, next time we have a public forum on the Lake District, trying to make it so we can set the the some of, you know, some of the feedback that we heard, lay out some of the information in a way such that we can, I I think solicit the public's input more effectively than what we did previously and it's, it's, it's not clear to me how if, you know, I think do we need to have a meeting or do we need to, you know, put it on the agenda, talk about how we wanted to structure a public forum at one of our meetings and then have a public forum, so then you have, you know, a meeting about how to structure the next public forum meeting and make sure to, you know, have it at one of these meetings, everyone can see us trying to set how we'd structure the public forum, you know, is that kind of the preferred methodology? You know, I'm just trying to understand what the process is in terms of trying to be efficient with everyone's time, because to Theo's point, otherwise, people who call in, they would see the us talking about, you know, how we want to structure, you know, even posing the question to the public.
Correct. But at least they, if it was on the agenda, they would they would see that if they chose to see it. If it was under items unanticipated at the end of one of our meetings, they may or may not see that. It's a process that we're going through, again, trying to be open, so it's one thing, we could, you know, send the questions and people can review them, but shouldn't the public also see those questions and be able to understand what we're working on also? So. I think we just need to give you know, again, the benefit of the doubt to the public that we're gonna give you fair notice on what we're doing. So.
So that kind of leads to another follow-up question I had as early to the process. You know, we have, so the last time we had the public forum, right? You know, I think that we, you know, we had the letter that we sent to the business owners, which I thought was a great communicative step to make sure that the business owners knew what the, you know, the baseline of what we're trying to attempt was. You know, I think the intent of trying to develop, you know, kind of for lack of a better term, an agenda of how the next public forum would go, based on, again, the feedback that we received in terms of what people are thinking of mission statement, some of the potential opportunities that we heard for incentives to give to to property owners as well as restrictions to potentially impose on them in terms of the buckets that are being identified, you know, I think when we post the next public forum, the where we're actually solicit feedback from the public, you know, as part of that public notice, I understand that we have to submit something, you know, within the paper record, you know, a certain minimum distance, I think it's two weeks, you know, is there an opportunity to to use that as, you know, the the location to you know, lay out some of those, you know, here's the mission, here are some of the things that are being considered one way or the other, to your point, to get it out in the public, so people are coming in and they know some of the things that have been developed by the board in advance of hit, you know, getting into a meeting with a number of people and the pub, each member of the public only has a certain amount of time to talk.
Well, for one thing, for the public forum, we we won't be posting that. It's not gonna go in the paper, though it's only posted for a public meeting, so once we actually decide on some text and it's all written down, then it starts the actual process of having a public hearing where people commenting on a on actual text of what the article is going to be. So for the public forum, we don't have to post that, we just need, I mean, we don't need to we don't need to publish it in the paper. We should do everything we can to notify the public, meaning put it on our agenda, maybe post it on our website, but it's not a public hearing, it's just a opportunity for people to speak on the direction of where we're going. And we may formulate, you know, all of the text for that. But I I caution everyone on starting to, you know, write things down because people get expectations that you've you've made this document and this is exactly what it's gonna be, and then if it's revised during another public forum and then we publish an article that's completely different than a document they had seen previously, they're gonna say you changed something in the process. And we've already seen that, even though nothing's been decided yet. So that's the 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 line we need to basically thread in this whole process here is to have a public deliberations, meaning public us talking so everyone can hear what we're talking about, and then once we do get to a point where we want to write it down, at that point, we we should be prepared to bring it to a public hearing so we can actually get people's reaction to it. Instead of theoretical, I don't like this, I don't like that. Again, we're we're still in the in the process of soliciting input from people. So I I don't know if that, does that explain it?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Jim.
I I think it outlines the constraints, I don't know if it necessarily in my mind outlines halfway forward, you know, I think that in my mind, right, I don't know, I think other members of the board would potentially agree, you know, I I don't know if we necessarily got high quality feedback from the public when we had the previous forums. And I think the intent of some of the conversations that, you know, and Theo and I had, I think Theo had with other members of the board was, how do we provide a little bit of structure for our listening tour in terms of you know, what are the types of things that can be considered while actually making it a formal proposal? As well as what are the high level goals that I think that from the the limited feedback we did receive that we think we heard? And so, you know, I think what I'm hearing is that, that's you know, if you're if you're trying to communicate that to people in advance, that's a public hearing, but that also comes to the expectation that you're locking in and you're having the answers, which I don't think we're, I don't think anyone would claim that we're we're at that stage.
Correct, because that's why we're having the public forums to to again solicit input from people, a-again, if we want to go that route. We don't need to do that, we could go right to texts and and come up with something. And if we decide that's what we want, we can have a public hearing and start the process. But I I I I was under the impression that we were going to let the the master planning process begin and then from that we would, if for some reason we saw that there was a need and some some useful information came out of that, we would we could move forward on that or we would wait until that process finished itself. So. So, you know, if the board wants, you know, if the board wants to start saying exactly, you know, if if everyone has heard enough from what the incentives would be versus the restrictions and we're comfortable going that route, we could do that if we want. But again, we should post it so people can see the process.
I I had a slightly different impression that the, since the master plan isn't formally starting until January, that we're, things are sort of moving in parallel tracks and that I thought, you know, given the past discussion and given Vision twenty thirty, we might be able to I think gather a lot more input and and then decide how to proceed after that, so. And for the record, the the only board members who have edited or commented on this document are just Jim and myself, there was, there was no quorum. The, would it be acceptable for me to make a motion that at then, the next meeting, we vote to schedule the next public forum on this topic for November ninth and that we reserve twenty minutes at the next meeting, because I know we have a busy meeting next in two weeks to comment and receive comment about some suggested discussion questions for the the next formal discussion about this.
We, yeah, we could do that. We, we could do that. I guess my question is, is there a rush to get this done? Is there a need to get this, you know, to move this quickly on this, considering we haven't really heard any input. We didn't, we really got no input except for we need a lot of restrictions on stuff around the lake and stop building. So, do you feel there's a need to move forward at this pace?
Only that it has been a, a topic that, that's been before us, you know, really since May. So I think being hon- honest about it and keeping it going. But I think also to your point, there is a more in-depth process that will get started. And, and you know, most immediately, the meeting in two weeks is going to be busy. I, I, in all fairness, I think, I think we, we can do both. You know, keep this discussion moving so that it does inform the master plan discussion.
Well, we could put this on the agenda. Again, at our next meeting, it's, I don't know if we're going to have enough, you know, it's going to be a long meeting. I don't know if we want to have, at our next meeting formulate an outline for a public hearing. At our, our meeting after that, we could do that, but there's still a lot of work to be done, so.
I, I'd propose to do it on the ninth, you know, the 26th has a lot going on. You know, that will also be the meeting directly after town meeting. Which, if there's any, you know, I, I don't anticipate this item coming up, but if there's any, you know, conversations around development and other kind of zoning, you know, planning adjacent items at that town meeting. That also might, you know, spur interest from the public as it relates to this topic, knowing that this is something, you know, scheduled shortly thereafter the town meeting. So I propose that we have a pub, you know, we put it on the agenda to, to talk about how setting an agenda for a future public forum on the ninth. With the idea of setting a public forum for either the 23rd or the, the meeting in December. And then we theoretically would have a public forum with a little bit of, you know, the definition in advance of it by the end of the year. And then going into the next year, we, we could move into the public hearing phase after the holidays.
Okay. I mean, we, we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting. I, I just cautioned that we may not have as, as much time as we want to spend on this. So we may want to put it on at our next meeting, knowing that the, the questions that that Theo and Jim worked on will be presented and we say, you know, at our next meeting, we're going to discuss these more in depth. If you guys have any input between now and then, please add to them. So, but I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to set our expectations that potentially we're going to be in a, in a situation where it's 10, 11 o'clock and we're starting a whole new deep dive into something that might not, you know, it's going to need more time. So.
So, how, I mean, I, I think to Jim's point, I think the motion would be to discuss you, planning for a, a, a forum on this topic, including these suggested discussion items on November 9th, skipping next week or the next meeting.
Okay. Well, we don't need to make a motion. We just, you know, we can just add that to with the agenda that on our, on our first meeting in November, we'll have a item discussion about lake zoning.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate the clarity and I appreciate the time everyone spent tonight talking through it. Sorry for a little tempest in my pot. So thank you.
No, that's all right. I, I get I'm. I'm a little probably hypersensitive of, of us being criticized for not having a completely transparent process here. Because you, I, I know in the end of this, we're, we're still going to be criticized of not being completely transparent anyways. But at least we know that we have done everything we can. Where in many other zoning changes, it has not been. So. That's what I'm, I'm pushing for. So.
Well, and I, I very much appreciate that caution. So thank you, Matt.
Okay. Anyone else have any items not anticipated? Issues?
I, I will just throw out that the, the application period to join the master plan advisory group closes on, on Friday, the 15th. So.
Yeah, I think Aaron was gonna, you're gonna speak on that, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
You're muted.
So I was looking at my computer. So yeah, it closes this Friday. And from there we will review all the applications. I will be sending around all the applications to the planning board ahead of our October 26th meeting, 26th meeting. So you have an idea of, of why they're looking to join their background. Right now we have 27 applicants. And I'm going to go through and, and make sure there's no one I forgot. And I know Jen McDonald today posted on our Facebook just saying if you did apply and you haven't heard back from me to reach out, just to make sure I'm not missing anyone. So that's my call out to anyone. If you haven't heard from me yet. But yeah, we have everyone from people that have lived here for a few months, six months to 25 years to 34 years, and then a lot of one to, to five to 10 years as well. So in a mix of different professions, residents, business owners. So. But we're still open to, to other folks as well. So. It's going to be, and as the advisory board, you'll attend four meetings in between the public meetings and just helping us guide the conversation, kind of give us some input and help us as well facilitate the public meeting. So.
And, and how many are you expecting to be on this board again?
20 to 25.
Okay.
So, so yeah, we'll have to, and you know, we want a pretty diverse board. I'm not sure if that's open to, you know, having a couple more, if that is, you know, if we're over two, I, I can't see why that would be an issue. But that's something I'd have to double check because in our contract it says 20 to 25.
Okay. So my suggestion would be that we all get this list as soon as the the, this application process has closed and we all mark up with who, you know, on our own, who we believe would be good fits, then we can compare this list when we get together and from then, you know, I suppose if we have a consensus on certain people that we definitely want on there, then you know, we can choose those people and, and do that process. That might be the quickest way. So we all, instead of, you know, we can, we could go through every single name, but if, if we all agree, I don't know if we want to pick from the list, you know, if we want to pick 20 people, each person, or we want to do something smaller. So we at least if we all agree on a certain amount, we don't have to have a long discussion on that particular person. But if there's a couple of people that we're going back and forth upon, then we, we may want to have a, you know, a discussion on whether they would be beneficial addition to this process.
It's something I just wanted to note too. I think we're looking for a really you know, diverse pool of people. I know I just said that, but everything, we do have some, a high school student that has applied to be part of this. I know, you know, I don't ask for people's ages, but I would like, I'd like to see some senior presence. The senior population, I think I'm lacking in that based on what I've seen. But yeah, just something to keep in mind when you're reviewing, I would love to have business owners involved, you know, residents, new and, and old. So just something to keep in mind.
And is one of the requirements that you must be a Wakefield resident or is it a property owner or, or?
I think we're looking for more resident based folks. I think it's like, it's a mixture of both. Like if you're a resident and business owner, I don't think we'd be against someone if they owned a business in town and, and lived in another town. I mean, they could give us input being a business owner here and kind of what we want for economic development moving forward. But so far I haven't run into that yet, but.
Okay. But technically they, as, as long as they are the owner of the land, they are a stakeholder. Whether they are not, so.
Yeah, I'll double check the, what we put in, in our writing, but I'm pretty sure that's the case.
All right. And then other, are there requirements for being on the board, you know, for, for, for doing this? What the time commitment is going to be?
So, yeah.
The technology requirements, do you need to have a computer? Do you need, you know, how, how is the process going to take?
So we were hoping to do some sort of hybrid model and that was what in our contract, just but given kind of what's going on currently in our environment. I'm not sure what the winter months are going to look like. So it might be virtual, which again, I know put, you know, causes some issues for folks that might not have a computer because these meetings will be at night after work hours. So that's a great point. I know we are trying to do hybrid and something that we should definitely keep in mind. Because if they want to be interactive, I mean, it's one thing if you want to watch the meeting, you can watch it on, you know, WCAT. But if you want to be interactive, that kind of makes it challenging. So let me find out more about that.
Okay.
That's a good point, Matt.
Well, that's, that's one of my rubs is the inequity that the past year has, has shed. If you do not have a good computer, fast connection, the ability to, to, the ability to, to be there at the, at that time is, you know, that's always a restriction. But if you, if you don't have access to broadband, basically you can't participate for the most part. You, you could phone in, but then you need to have a data plan and all that. So.
Yeah, and I know, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I know a town hall, and this is something I brought up a couple of months ago. They are working on making all the rooms to have all it set up that we can do that hybrid model. So virtual would still be an option while we're, the people that want to come in can do the meeting there. So. I can give you an update on that the next time we talk to what that, what that's going to look like.
Okay. And I don't know, is there any availability for people that didn't have wifi or didn't have the technology to log on to a wifi somewhere that's provided by the town? You know, it would, library would work, except they're not open during these hours. So. I'm just.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Yeah, let me see if there's anything. I mean, I don't know if the library would stay open late for these meetings. Like if someone if reached out to us and said they needed access to a computer to participate. I don't know how that works, but let me ask, that's a good question. But yeah.
I was almost envisioning a hotspot at the town hall parking lot. So if someone really needed a, a better signal or, you know, some wifi that they could park there.
Yeah.
Not even come in, but stay in their car and do something. So.
Okay. Yeah, that's definitely, and I'll see what, I'm sorry, I'm just grabbing my notebook. I'll see what other communities have done because that is a very good point. I mean, we talk about wanting to get a lot of people involved. But right now, if you don't even have access or good internet connection, it makes it very hard right now to be involved in this type of stuff. So.
Yeah, because I, I actually know a couple of people where they rely on the library to, to get their internet connection. So. That's one thing it was, I was going to say is that, you know, unfortunately to participate now in public government, you, you need to spend a certain amount of your own money to, to have that privilege and anything we can do to level the playing field, I think would be, would be best. So.
Okay, that's great. If you don't mind, I have a few other things to bring up.
Oh, yeah.
So carrying over, we were talking about vision 2030. We were just talking about this last week. We will be having a joint meeting so that on October 25th with the town council, planning board CBA and the town council for M A P C to present the final report for vision 2030. I don't know when that's going to be on the agenda yet, but just something to put that on your calendars. At 7:00 PM, it is going to, you know, it does need the approval from, from you guys and the town council. So. And that should be available.
That was October 25th, you said?
Yeah. So the Monday before our meeting. So. Yeah. So I'll send you, once I have more information on that, I'll, I'll send that over. I believe they're going to be sending the report around for public comment. Don't mark my words on that, but then the final review will be, or presentation will be that date. So. And then last thing I'll kind of talk about today is the housing forum that we're having. As we were talking about the Lake District and the topic of development in town, I think this is a really good way for the, the town residents and folks that are interested in development that's happening across Massachusetts in general. Just learn more fact, facts about housing, not only in Wakefield, but the Commonwealth in general. You know, I know a lot of stuff gets put out there that isn't actually accurate about some of these developments or new housing projects that, you know, come in when it comes to traffic or schools. The impact on infrastructure in town. So we're working with the mass housing partnership to kind of put out actual data and facts of what other municipalities have seen from development. And, and kind of talking about those topics as well. We will leave time at the end for Q and A or just discussion between mass housing partnership, myself and Steve. I think it's going to be geared more towards mass housing, but at that event, I'll be really talking about the vision 2030 process, the master plan. Kind of a pipeline of what our current housing projects that we, we have right now. Because I'm the one in town that does a lot of the reporting to the state for our, our affordable housing. And then also recent planning efforts. And then I'll also be talking about the mixed use overlay district that was brought to town meeting a few years ago and just, you know, that was voted on in town meeting. And that's why we're seeing this transit oriented development. I just wanted to put that out there and I know the flyer is on our Facebook. I can send it to you. So you can send it to folks that have reached out to you as well, but that will be on October 20th at 7:00 PM. So. And the last thing I'll say is today I was trying to find some information in our bylaws from years and years ago. And Paul Revis did such a wonderful job organizing all the minutes and legal notices and, and in these binders, which have been really helpful to me today when I was trying to find, unfortunately, I didn't find anything, but I did learn a lot going through all of them. So maybe Susan, you and I could work together on doing a binder for last year. Because I think that was the last, I think, what year are we in? 2019, I think might be the last one I had. But I just thought, I know everything's online now with the recordings and stuff, but I just found it very helpful. So something I'd like to continue. So. I just wanted to throw that out there. So.
Okay. Thank you. All right. One, I have one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm going to butt in if someone else wanted to say something, but I'm gonna share my screen again, because I know Theo brought this up about, I don't know if you can, can you see that? I have to see when you share something. Theo was, was, was inquiring about a checklist for ANR. So I'm, I'm just going to explain the process of basically what I do is I pull up and I'll print out this section 320 dash four plan, which Plan which does not require approval. And I'll read through each of these and I'll basically check off whether the plan has these or not, or. Like like we pointed out, the the intent of what we want, so the wording might be slightly different and but. Basically means the same. I'll say yes, it complies or not, so. I will go through this and I will check off each of these, and this is how I. How I determine whether a plan meets our rules and regulations, so. Now I'm doing this now, I tell you the truth, I I don't need to be doing it, someone else can. Can do it at some point, and and you probably all will be at some point, especially perhaps if it's, you know. Just the chair, the the chair doing it, but. It's a good, good way, and I do this with a subdivision, I just print out and I go through and I check off whether it meets it or not, so. So theoretically, I know you were asking for that. This is my my checklist right here, and I just go right through it and. And do it. And again, a lot of these are on here. Because. Frankly, they should have been on there. There there are requirements for plans that surveyors should require or that are that they should follow. Sometimes they don't, and I know for a fact the the reasons why some professionals. Don't do what they're supposed to do is because. And this doesn't make it right, but the person who's paying for it refuses to have certain things, so. If there are regulations that you can point to and says. I'm required to do this, it makes it much easier, so. So basically, some things have been added on here that. Have to be done, they they should have been done all along. If you're doing a proper plan, they're on here now, so. So that's. That's what we have here. So some things we need to update a little bit again was. The submission of what we're gonna submit. Plan, prints and application, all this, so you can read through this and if you guys have any comments. We can modify this if need be, so we may wanna set a date. At some meeting when we're not, don't have public hearings going on or other things where we can discuss it, so.
The other thing that I found useful going through this is one of the items Bill sent me as my welcome packet was the A and R handbook. And there's a boatload of case law as it relates to different esoteric items in terms of establishing what is or isn't required. But there are also a couple of good checklists of the specific, you know, frontage types, minimum requirement as it relates to access. And the. The specific kind of ways that are acceptable as well.
Yeah, this is great, thank you. Yeah, and I I got to page seventy of the A and R handbook. Realized I needed to read more about subdivision of land before I really understood.
Well, to Jim's point, that was the same document I sent out to you, Theo and Megan, just with a bunch of links and different things that I keep. That Matt had shared with me when I joined the board or different ones that I came across that helped, like the registry of deeds and and, yeah. It's, it is helpful to have that one page or two-page word document, and if you do find yourself with maybe some additional. Websites that you like to go to, like the mass housing isn't on there, but maybe there's something good to have about mass housing. I know I I threw something in there, I think for forty B. Just to explain what it is, but I think it's good to. To keep that going, and I and I think in the future, this is something, Theo, that I know we've talked about, Matt, and it's like, how do we. Prepare onboarding for future members of the planning board? And it would be great to have some type of a either PDF or checklist, just as that planning board person comes on board. They they understand and can can do some research on their own to, you know, read all the pages of the A and R handbook.
And there's, there's one thing else and. Just professionally, this drives me crazy when I see stuff like this and. I just. I don't know whose job it is to to do this, but when I. When I see. Something like this, and you've got different sized fonts and. It goes into a second page and. This, the the margins are inch and three quarters.
Do you want me to talk to Jen McDonald about revising this with? Our logo, more of a letterhead with the plane board and and this. Organized a little better.
I would love that.
I think you could fillable too. I mean, most people can if they have Adobe, but I think she can do it where you can just fill it in, so.
Yeah, basically, keep what we have here, but but get it all fit on one page, make sure we have enough signature block, you know. For some reason, there's a signature block for three on here. We should at least have everyone and then on one page, so when it's filled out that it. It's easy to file, so.
What do the other forms look like? I've seen them a million times, but while you have the screen up, could they use some revisions too? I mean, I, yeah, I'd probably just.
Yeah, they're they're a little bit better. But. There, there's a little bit of work that someone can go through and and revise all these and make them look professional, so. I know I would appreciate that, so. I I'm sorry, I've been hogging all the all this time. Does anyone else have anything else they wanna add at this point? Or items unanticipated? All right, excellent. So our next meeting. We we will have a public hearing on. Uh Starkav, whether they present plans. Beforehand, hopefully enough for us to review, or even if they don't, there's still, there's. As I said, we're still gonna have a public hearing, it's scheduled, so they need to attend, and if they have nothing. To present and they need to push it to the next meeting, they will do it in person. They're not gonna do it by email or anything, so. And then we have that zoning. Article that needs to be presented and we need to go through that, so. So this was happening at our next meeting. And did we decide to put anything on the agenda for? The lake zoning to quickly review that, or do we wanna wait till the meeting after that?
I have it down as November ninth.
All right, everyone's fine with that? Okay. All right. Sounds good. Item six, adjournment. We're here motion.
I owe y'all to make the motion to adjourn, so thank you.
All right, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Megan. All right, roll call, vote. Bill Spall.
Yes.
Jim Hogan.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
And Theo, no.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, all board members.